To our February 2nd meeting, we're hoping you're out there warm and cozy in your home with all of the snow we've just had for the last couple of days. So, welcome to our meeting. Our first order of business at every meeting is a pledge of allegiance. So if you please stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, God.
Under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, our next item of business is approval of minutes. I need a motion. If you please say your name when you move it.
Sue, I'll move it.
So moves it seconded by?
Adrian.
Seconded by Adrian. Anybody have any questions, additions, deletions to the minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is carried. Next on our agenda is our consent agenda. I need a motion, please, to accept the consent agenda.
Lynn, I'll move it.
Moved by Ed, seconded by Lynn. Just one thing on it. We have somebody retiring after many years, Dennis Levanna. Would please put that with regret? Anybody have anything, any other questions on anything on the consent agenda?
I would just like to add a personal thank you to Dennis for all of his hard work to the Nanuet School community.
Yep, thanks. Excellent. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda is adopted. The certified personnel, Dr. Fox?
We have none tonight. First time in a long time.
Very long time. Next on our thing is the Nanuet Principals Association. Dr. McHale?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Byrne. Whereas the Nanuet Principals Association have engaged in negotiations regarding into agreement and have come to a tentative agreement, subject to board approval. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the attached memorandum of agreement for the period July 1st, 2020, to July 30th, 2023, is hereby approved and ratified by our board.
Okay, I need a motion, please.
Sue, I'll move it.
Moved by Sue, seconded by Christine. Anybody have any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is carried. Congratulations, everyone who was involved in the principal project. Thank you.
Really happy. Thanks, everybody.
Next up is acceptance of grants and gifts. And the first is a grant from Walmart.
Yes, so thank you, as always, to our community partners for granting monies toward our school and our kiddos. So be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Nanuet Board of Education accepts a grant from Walmart in the amount of $2,000. The grant was requested by the Bar Middle School PTA and will be used for the teachers and students during recess at Bar 56 Academy and Bar Middle, the Academy School and the Bar Middle School.
Good. Very good. Thank you. We have to approve it, Mario?
Yes, you should accept it.
Okay, so we need a motion, please, for acceptance.
I'll move it.
Moved by Christine, seconded by Ed. Anybody have any questions? I think it's great.
I just want to say, great job, PTA.
Yeah, exactly.
After that grant. That's awesome.
It is awesome. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's carried. Next is another gift from ExxonMobil.
Yes, so thank you again to our community partners and our school community for reaching out for these grants, right? It does, as Sue highlights, it takes effort to signal to these groups that are looking to donate money that we need it. So thank you to everybody. Let's continue to participate in, you know, looking for grants for our kiddos. So whereas the ExxonMobil, through the company's educational alliance program, has provided a donation of $500 with the request that it be used in support of the STEM program in the Highview Elementary School. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Nanuet Board of Education accepts the donation of $500 from ExxonMobil.
Great. Motion, please?
I'll move it.
Moved by Adrian, seconded by Lynn. Anybody have any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is carried. Next up is our budget transfer, Mr. Spagnolo.
Yes, sorry. Be it resolved that the Nanuet Board of Education approves the attached authorization for budget transfer dated February 2nd, 2021 in the amount of $16,265 for the general fund.
Okay, motion, please?
I'll move it.
Moved by Ed, seconded by Christine. Anybody have any questions on the budget transfer? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is carried. Next up, the superintendent's report. Dr. McHale?
Okay, thank you, Ms. Byrne. I'm really proud to report from our 512 principals. Our SUNY Rockland Community College will be hosting the 2021 Black Achievement Award Ceremony virtually on February 25th, 2021. At 7 o'clock, we will send out more reminders of this on our social media and all of our other communication mediums. The award is given to students in grades 6, 8, and 10, and 12, who are exceptional students. We are proud to announce that 10 Golden Nights from our high school, 8 from our bar, and 4 from the academy are in the running. We are so proud of our diverse school community, and we love celebrating all of our kiddos. So, you know, please tune in and stay tuned for all of our nights that are in the running for these wonderful awards. Our K4 schools have been very busy assessing our kids with the use of our AIMS Web nationally-normed assessment. You know, it's a lot of work and our staff bringing kids in, sometimes on days that aren't there, you know, in-person testing days. You know, our teachers sitting with our kiddos and working with them to make sure that these assessments are as valid and providing us with as much feedback as possible. So important these days, as the community will hear later on. You know, it's very possible that we will go another school year without state tests, you know, due to the pandemic, the coronavirus, and its impact on schools. We do not have that feedback from the 3-8s or the Regents exams to tell us whether or not, you know, we are moving kids forward. So really, really important that we have secondary and, you know, and local and, you know, local assessments that help us keep a pulse on our students and how they're learning. So the AIMS Web is really, really important for our elementary school models. And so thank you to Principal Bonner and Principal Griffin for prioritizing that with your kids. I know it's a really difficult thing to manage, all of our students getting assessed through the AIMS Web model. So thank you so much. We need that feedback as a school community to make sure that we can continue to grow, that our curriculum is hitting the right standards, and that we're moving children in the right direction. And that's it for right now, Ms. Byrne. Thanks so much.
Thank you very much. Just before we go into reviewing the public questions, the last board meeting. And I had it written down, and I totally forgot. I wanted to congratulate Ryan McDonough for being a Scholar-Athlete. I know it's now a couple of weeks old, but I just wanted to put it in our minutes and congratulate Ryan. That's very prestigious to get a Scholar-Athlete Award, because I know our teams get the Scholar-Athlete, which is wonderful. But it's wonderful that we had one of our own students get tagged for that. So Ryan, congratulations.
Congratulations, Ryan.
Okay, the next item of unfinished business is reviewing our public questions. So Dr. McHale, I'm sure you have a number of questions out there.
I do, I do. You know, so, you know, again, as a trend that I've been starting to, you know, follow the past few board meetings, now that we're virtual, I miss our auditorium. I can't wait till we all, we all get back to in-person. Boy, oh, boy. But it is really kind of unpacking all of the community feedback and trying to make a trend out of it and just sort of holistically responding to what is what I believe is the narrative, the common narrative of everyone. So this past week, we received eight, eight community members asked questions. And, you know, all the questions revolve around what we all very much expect and accept as a reasonable request. You know, how can Nanuet Schools start bringing more children to campus each day now that we are, you know, we're in February? You know, we're about to crest on the March-to-March year of this pandemic. You know, what is Nanuet doing to evaluate our, you know, reopening plan, which we presented to our community in August and have successfully, you know, been running? So let me just unpack a little bit of that for everyone, just so people understand and our community members understand that we do hear you. I hear the emails. I take them very, very seriously. All of our principals do, and our board does. We sit and we deliberate about what does our Nanuet community need from us in terms of, you know, this, this, you know, we've been kind of calling this a mechanical bull of political needs, right? We're all trying to hold on and make sure that we're meeting everybody where they need us to be, but balancing all the different, different aspects of a school community. It's a really complex organization. So where we are right now, we are in phase, we are looking at phase 3 of our reopening plan. Phase 1 was opening the schools successfully in September. You know, we thought that this was going to be, you know, a huge lift to just with the coronavirus and the number of cases and thinking about how will teachers teach with masks on in the heat? How will rooms stay, stay clean, you know, with windows open? And, and since then, we have invested in air purifiers, and we've been, we've grown accustomed to wearing cloth masks. Our students have been brilliant and their families in, you know, abiding by the rules, washing hands in hallways. We have, we have Purell stations everywhere. We invested in air purifiers for every single classroom in our entire district. We meet weekly with the Health and Safety Team, with all the teachers and administrators in our entire district to make sure that we are constantly keeping up with all the nuances of health and safety and cleanliness. And that has, that has brought us huge, huge successes as a school community in the county from the first day of school until, you know, until now. Phase 2, phase 2 was brought to us, and again, you know, we sort of listened to the field around us. We listened to what's happening in the Lower Hudson Valley, and we started looking at our opportunities to meet children in need where they are and families where they are. So we started phase 2 about a month ago, a month and a half ago, where we invited, and we've been very transparent at board meetings. We've invited every single student with an individual education plan, with an IEP, kindergarten through 12th grade, back into our schools, you know, four days a week. As many days as we offer live instruction, we have brought those children back into schools. So we're doing that. We've had a rolling recruitment, so to speak, of students in high need for the last few months. That has been phase 2 of our, of our hybrid plan. Phase 3, I could say right now, began discussion prior to the winter break. You know, the Christmas, the Hanukkah winter break. Prior to that break, we got our leadership teams together that represent every one of our schools, all of our principals, all of our teacher leaders, our district-level directors, Dr. Fox, Mr. Palisi, Ms. Heaney, Ms. Carbone, Mr. Spagnolo, Mr. Valani. Our entire directorship at, at the district level has been putting all of their bandwidth and stamina into how can we now shift Nanuet into phase 3? How do we bring more children in to our schools because we know this is what our community values? This is what we value. I hear you all. I share your emails with my teams. There's, you know, I agree as a parent that it's our obligation to try and, you know, grind up against the guardrails as much as we can in this environment to serve the community that, you know, that we know and love. So we want, we want your kids in school every day of the week, and we hope that the vaccines will provide some sort of version of that in the near future. It's just, as you all know, it's been a really slow rollout, and we have very few members of our school community, teachers, staff, that are vaccinated properly at this point because it's not accessible. But prior to that, we have a plan. So our kindergarten through 4th grade are in Nanuet, that's our elementary model. They live in a specific schedule where they have one teacher all day, for the most part. We have a plan to try and bring kids in. We've already done it to a certain degree at Miller. We're moving to Highview, and our goal is to bring all children in at Highview four days a week. The Wednesday is really essential, and we can get into that maybe at a different board meeting. I'm happy to unpack that a little further, you know, with no problem, maybe in a presentation, why Wednesday is so important. But kindergarten through 4th grade, we have a plan. We're targeting it, I would say, maybe like second week of March. It encompasses potentially some families changing teachers, the board approving, and myself and us carving out sections of the, of the budget to hire some new staff. We have to hire some new teachers. We have to hire some new teaching assistants so that we can do this successfully and safely within this environment. Bringing back all of our students, K4, Miller and Highview by, you know, the second week of March. That, that's in our plan. We've been talking about it. There's a lot of work. You're going to start seeing surveys coming out that start asking families to sign on the dotted line, are you an in-person or are you a virtual family? Because what we are finding is that a lot of our in-person families, and again, this is a nonjudgmental statement. A lot of our in-person families are in and out, you know, sort of like Monday in, Tuesday out. Or if they're, if they're a B-day cohort, they're in on Friday, but they're not in on Thursday, and they're doing the virtual, and they're moving, you know, midday. Their families are picking the kids up and taking them home. We get it. This is an emotional, heavy lift for all families. But we need to do a seat analysis on every single desk in our district that we can fit in each classroom safely within the guidelines of the CDC, the Rockland County Department of Health primarily. That's who we answer to. And there are, there are tons and tons and hundreds of families in Nanuet that want live seats. So if families have live seats and they're not necessarily taking advantage of those, we need you to start putting your, you know, your name on, on something that says, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be in every day because this seat is my, my child's, because other families are really looking for those seats as well. So we're doing a seat analysis, as well as trying to like figure out how to repurpose space in our hallways and our classrooms. And we're doing that heavy lift in the K4 world to get all of our kiddos back. But it does require some collaboration and some honesty from our community members. You cannot be a live, a live student who doesn't want to be in the virtual and have sporadic attendance in and out, in and out, because, you know, we're really, we're trying to maximize live experiences for all kids as best we can. So secondary, as we know, in Nanuet, we're unique, that our 5th graders live sort of a middle school secondary schedule. So from 5th grade up to 12th grade, all of our kiddos experience a secondary schedule where they have multiple teachers a day. They move around a secondary schedule. That action plan is a little bit different. We are, we are focusing our attention on Wednesdays. We are looking to fold out the virtual Wednesdays and start bringing, you know, kiddos back, alternating A and B schedule, A and B cohorts each week, which some of our colleagues in other areas of Bergen County and Westchester County have done with our particular schedule. They, you know, our iteration of the Wednesday in the middle, we're now prepped and ready to start bringing kids in every other week. So we're going to do that, and there'll be more information coming out about that shortly again. But while that's happening, the analysis of who's in seats each day is so important. So families, if, you know, if you're kiddos, and we get it, we know it. I've been quoted in articles in the Lower Hudson, you know, the Low Hut has been doing articles on attendance, and I was quoted saying, "We know that kids are not coming to school because they're afraid of being quarantined. They're participating in things outside of school that they're nervous about. They don't want to be in school anymore." None of these reasons are reasons why anyone would judge a family or a child. But when it comes to where we are right now in the school year, you know, again, cresting on almost a year of this pandemic, we are really trying to honestly do a seat analysis of, are your children benefiting from the home experience? Because our online virtual platform is fantastic. You know, I, I'm kudos to all of our principals and all of our teachers. You know, if this is the worst thing, that our kiddos feel like they're accessing the curriculum almost just as well at home, and it suits their needs, and they're talking to their families about maybe being home, you know, homeschooled through our platform instead of being in the, you know, in the seats, that's fine. We just need to know, because we do have a lot of families that are desperate for that seat each day. So we're doing a lot of this work. It's gonna, you're gonna start feeling a lot of this communication, a lot of this outreach, whether it be grassroots phone calls to homes based on attendance patterns or whether it be straightforward, formal surveys, asking families, are you going to sign on the dotted line? Are you going to go virtual for the rest of the year? Or are you going to stick with your AAA, BB, or your BBB, AA, which we're happy to add an extra day each, every other week to our secondary teams? So, so Ms. Byrne, yeah, a lot of the open forum questions are about this. There, it's about, you know, what is Nanuet doing to, you know, spend time on action planning, more time for kids on campus? You know, do we see what's happening around us, you know, in the Hudson Valley? Have we collaborated with schools that are bringing more kids back in? The simple answer is yes. That is all we think about. That's all we do. We spend tons of time between quarantining and working with the Department of Health and making sure that our schools are safe. Our district-level team, our principals, our teacher leaders are all trying to figure out how to maximize live instruction. And I think as long as we keep moving forward with this, and to the community listening there now, you will, you will feel it over the next month. You know, you will definitely feel it, that we are turning up the dial a lot because we want kids in. We're hoping that that movement will converge with the vaccine distribution movement, and then maybe they'll square at some point in mid-spring to, to close to the summer where we could start looking at schools and start getting guidance from our Rockland County Department of Health that we could start looking like something that we're so used to and we can't wait for, for next school year, which is, is, you know, schools filled with kids and filled with teachers and, and everybody confident about their ability to interact with each other without worrying about their safety.
Right.
So that, I know that was a lot, but it, I wanted to speak to everyone because it wasn't just, you know, the 6 to 8 that emailed me, emailed the board for this evening. You know, there's 10 to 15 countless others that are speaking for others in the community that I've received from last board meeting to now, asking, what is our game plan? So if you could just trust us, it's there, and, you know, we've, we've been there so far as a leader in the county and in the region. We will continue to do that. So just trust us, and, and we welcome more of your feedback. There's, please, there's no, no worries about you offering your opinions or your feedback from what you see in other districts. So thank you to the community for, for pushing us and giving us some feedback.
Great. Thank you, Dr. McHale. And please keep our, keep the questions coming. We have another board meeting next Tuesday night. So if you have any other questions on anything tonight or anything on your mind, please make sure you get the questions to us. Our next item under unfinished business is a presentation. Very excited about this presentation from our Highview Elementary reopening update. So take it away.
Hello, everyone. Mr. Palisi, would you be so kind as to share our screen? Thank you. I would like to thank the Board of Education, Dr. McHale, Dr. Fox, and Mr. Palisi for inviting us here this evening and for supporting the reopening plan of Highview School. Next slide. And here is our reopening team. The entire staff of Highview played important roles in the reopening plan. A safe reopening was possible only through the collaboration of this team. Our teachers, teaching assistants, support staff, office staff, nurse, instructional facilitators, food services, custodians, and lunch monitors. Everyone was instrumental in bringing us to where we are and bringing us there safely. Behind these smiles is the dedication, commitment, and professionalism of people who care about children. Next slide. Throughout our reopening, planning these essential items served as our foundation. Although we knew it would look different this year, our goal was to provide a learning environment and experiences for in-person and at-home students that was consistent with what we know as a typical school day. To that end, we focused on health and safety protocols, new schedules to support the hybrid model and virtual Wednesday, the Learning Management System, Schoology. And here, really, our goal was to develop a robust and agile planning process to ensure that we would be ready for potential pauses, and we started that from day one. We had to build our technology toolkit and attend professional development. Many, many thanks to Mr. Palisi and Mr. Lene for all of their help. And our focus is to incorporate best practices for teaching and learning to maximize student engagement and participation, something we are always analyzing, following, and really hold as the utmost important item. And again, to maintain a strong school community. We hope to provide you with a glimpse of these essentials throughout the presentation this evening. Next slide.
Everyone, I'm Katie Legge, the Assistant Principal at Highview Elementary School. Our planning teams have expanded their repertoire of technology, allowing them to make decisions about the best tool for the job when thinking about what's best for their students and also what reflects best practices. Of course, with the toolbox also comes the decision-making process for each lesson and embedding the teaching of the technology to our students to begin to develop their expertise. We hope to show you some examples that reflect the process of teaching and learning in the hybrid model. Next slide, please.
Good evening. Am I up? Good evening. My name is John Lawless. I am a 4th grade teacher. Last year, the analogy used for teaching, when we went fully remote, was it was like flying a plane and building it at the same time. Well, this year, we found out we built the Kitty Hawk, and we're now being upgraded to a fighter jet. Trouble is the directions were from the people of IKEA. After much consideration, Highview decided to go ahead with Schoology to meet the needs of our students. Schoology is a learning platform that allows the students to work synchronously and asynchronously and have access to lessons through a myriad of programs that you saw on the last slide. We had to train ourselves, our students, our families. And we hope to give you a look inside Schoology at the elementary level. Chris, can you play a first screencast of fire?
Good evening. My name is John Lawless. I'm a 4th grade teacher at Highview Elementary School. Tonight, I would like for you to see the two sides of Schoology, what a teacher creates and what a student sees. First, my point of view. My homepage shows the different courses I am part of. When I click on my face, it will direct me to my 4JL classroom. All the 3rd and 4th grade pages have the same basic information for the students to have access to. There might be a short message above, but they also have the Zoom link that they go to every day. They will also have the Zoom schedule for Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, and all virtual Wednesdays. Also, there is extra links for the students to find. Also, there is extra links for the students to find ongoing work. For instance, if they were wanting, um, a topic for a journal calendar, they would click on the journal calendar and they would be able to find a writing prompt. I would like to show you how I would see a student's work. So I would go down to a week of, and how I would grade their work. So if I was looking for, um, a piece of work, say, social studies. This particular one was Native American for Natural Resources. Um, I can see the, um, assignment and the document that the kids would have to open.
Uh, so the video would have continued and you would have seen, um, me going into a student's work and being able to grade it, but it didn't make the editing cut. Um, but, uh, what I'd like to show you now is, um, from a student in my class. Um, her name is Skylar. Her name gets cut out at the beginning, so you won't hear it. But, uh, she will present the student side of it.
Good evening. My name is Clara. I'm a student in 4JL. When I am home every morning, I go to my school page.
Make it louder.
I have all my courses here. I have Mr. Lawless's class, art class, orchestra, STEM, and Mrs. Lipson, SEL class. If I was in the library, I'd put this course. At nine thirty, I log into my Zoom class for a morning meeting and then continue into social studies to see what work I have today. I go into my class folder, scroll down and click on the week of. Go into the day and then here is all the work that we have to do today. There's always two parts to the lesson. First is the lives written by Mr. Lawless, teach both the remote students and the in-class students. The second part is where the remote students go off the Zoom to do independent work found on Schoology. The in-class students have independent work or Mr. Lawless will work with you in a small group or just with you.
And that is, uh, a quick look into, um, Schoology on the third and fourth grade. Um, so Chris, the next line.
I'll go first. Uh, my name is Tim Nye. I'm a fourth grade teacher. I want to quickly highlight the student's journey through a typical Wednesday. Uh, they're assigned a full asynchronous workload through the day. All of their assignments are found on Schoology where John just mentioned. Uh, mixed through and throughout the day are both large group Zooms, which include a morning and afternoon meeting with their entire class. Uh, they have a Zoom with their specials teacher and Mrs. Lipson for SEL. And there are also small group Zooms during office hours where students either meet with a support teacher or their classroom teacher may conduct a guided reading group or math extra help. Jen Mers will now discuss the teacher side of a typical Wednesday.
Good evening. I'm Jen Mers, third grade teacher at Highview. And I'm going to give you a little glimpse into a teacher's perspective of Virtual Wednesday. So first I just wanted to comment for a moment on what Mr. Nye spoke about regarding the whole class Zoom meeting. Um, this is actually my favorite Zoom of the week. The kids know this. It's very, I make it very open with them. Um, it's really the only time we're together all in the same platform. So it's, it's like our special time together. Uh, most of the time I'm introducing cursive letters, doing a read aloud, sometimes dressing up as a character, doing something a little silly. Um, other times we're incorporating some of the academics into some fun. Um, we do multiplication bingo on Wednesday for our meeting once in a while. We do Mad Libs, which is kind of sneaking in parts of speech. Um, and sometimes just a little scavenger hunt for fun. Um, but we do try to do this to build our classroom community because we are a little fractured. So we really use this time to come together. One of the other pieces that I wanted to highlight are the teacher office hours, um, on our Wednesdays. So typically this is used for small group guided reading, sometimes reteaching of math concepts. Um, and lately I've been using it as a check-in for my online students. Since I don't get any personal one-on-one time with them, I use this as a little check-in. How are things going? You know, and, and to address any concerns that they might have. So this has been working out really nicely as well. Um, while the students are attending their various Zoom meetings throughout the day, whether they're in SEL Zoom, special area, meeting with a remedial reading or math teacher, the teachers are busy in their small group planning meetings. Um, I'm really proud of the quality of work that Highview has put forth. And it really couldn't be achieved without this crucial planning time. We meet, I'm on the Social Studies and Science Committee. Um, and, you know, at Highview, we really do pride ourselves on creating rigorous and engaging lessons for our students. We wouldn't have it any other way. So the time that we spend is invaluable. Um, I know that was mentioned earlier. I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. As elementary school teachers, we're faced with a unique situation since we do teach all subject areas. Um, we do after we create and plan and do all of these endless enhancing modifying of our lessons. We need to meet together. Um, because if you're not planning a lesson, you need to make sure that we're prepared and knowledgeable for the other subject areas that we didn't plan ourselves. Only with this planning time are we able to properly execute these quality lessons that we are putting forth. And as a parent of a Clarkstown, of three Clarkstown students, I can definitely tell you that the work that Highview puts out is a cut above the rest. The last thing I just wanted to talk about was this full class meeting that we're going to be having. Um, it was supposed to start tomorrow, but I believe it will start next week. Um, I'm actually really excited. I'm going to use some of that time to emphasize some of our social emotional learning. The word of the month, we're going to be doing some read alouds. And I'm hoping that this will be wonderful. February is patience. That's our word of the month. So I will keep you posted. Next slide, please.
Hi, my name is Danielle Carey and I am the reading teacher at Highview. I am lucky enough to work with both third and fourth grade students. So as a result of the hybrid model, we had to reinvent and reimagine what ELA instruction looks like. We currently have two live lessons during the ELA block where students are able to participate either through Zoom or in class. And teachers are, continue to use the Good Habits, Great Readers, and Writing Program. We still follow the scope and sequence of that program, but we also incorporate and utilize different texts to ensure that students are engaged and motivated as, um, they are reading and writing. Teachers, um, use a variety of different resources in order to implement our lessons. We rely heavily on Google Slides to introduce and model specific strategies and skills. And these slides not only act as an interactive whiteboard, so that way both in-person and at-home students can view them. They also are like our anchor charts of the past. Um, third grade students are currently reading a novel, Third Grade Angels. And we decided to choose this novel because we know that children have really enjoyed it in the past and it is very engaging. We are currently teaching story elements using this model, novel, but we are also incorporating ideas from our SEL program and encouraging students to think about how the character's feeling, um, based upon their actions and words. And sometimes we even incorporate the mood meter and, and ask students to identify where they think the character might be on the mood meter. After students receive a live instruction, they may go off to work independently, um, utilizing some of the strategies and skills that they have practiced in class. And small group, uh, work is going on in the classroom. Sometimes small group work might be live instruction or it might take the virtual, um, virtual instruction. So Mr. Pelisi, could you please play the first video?
You want the small group instruction?
Yes, the guided reading. Yes, thank you.
So problem, solution, text structure. I need you to follow along as I read this out loud to you. Authors use different text structures to organize their writing. This story, The Monkey and the Crocodile, uses the problem, solution text structure. So what we're going to do today as we read is we're going to stop reading when we identify the problem in the story. And we're going to practice jotting down keywords, um, about the events that happen in the story. So we're going to jot down the problem. We're going to stop reading. We're going to jot down the problem. We're going to jot down some keywords to help us find the events or what's happening in the story. And then we're also going to jot down some keywords that help, help us to figure out what the solution is to the problem. And this is going to help us understand the text better, the strategy that good readers use. You're going to unmute now and you're going to read this page here, honey.
She turned to us and said, see the monkey up there in that tree? Bring his, bring his heart. I want to eat it.
Okay. So as a reader now, I want to stop because I think there's a problem. There's a character that wants something. So underneath your problem column, I would like for you to write a sentence explaining what the problem is that we just read about. Think about the character that wants something and write that in a sentence. And then we're going to share.
So I wrote, the mother crocodile wants to eat the monkey's heart.
Excellent. Awesome.
That was just a small, short example of a, a guided reading lesson. And we really try to incorporate both technology as well as paper and pencil tasks throughout the day. RAS Kids is also another program that we utilize with students and all students have access to this program. And it is a place where we encourage students to practice and apply the strategies that they're working on in class. Um, many texts, students can find texts at their independent reading level. Teachers can also tie in content-related resource, um, resources as well as guided reading resources. In addition to that, RAS Kids also has an assessment piece where, so teachers are able to track student progress and really finds lessons that are appropriate for particular skills and needs. We're now going to watch another video, um, that gives a student's perspective of RAS Plus.
Hi. I'm Valentina Simon. I'm here today to show you my stats and to show you my level up.
So what is Level Up?
Level Up is a bunch, a bunch of books that, um, that are recommended for you.
And between what happens at the top between S and T?
Between S and T, it says I have, that I have nine tasks left. And that means I have nine more books to.
Which one would be your favorite?
I would think The Titanic Lost and Found.
And why is that?
Because it's very interesting and intriguing.
Hi, I'm Declan and I'm going to show you the reading room on RAS Kids. It's my favorite section of RAS Kids because it shows you all the different topics of the books. It can show you all the popular ones or the ones that you like to read. But one thing that I like is if you click topics, it will show you in all of them in that. And it shows you like what topic the book will find out which one you might want to read. My favorite one on the reading room is Spites and Stings because I really like insects and spite.
Um, word study is another component that we addressed during the ELA block. We continue to use the Foundations Program to teach phonics, um, encoding and decoding. And Fun Hub is an interactive website where teachers are able to project our traditional sound cards. Um, so that we both children at school as well as, um, at home can, can view. There are also some videos that go along with the program and other resources as well. Finally, during the ELA block, we incorporate, um, activities to develop fluency. And you will now hear from a student in Mrs. Studs' class.
When I read fluently, I read with accuracy. I read at a good rate. I read with expression and I pay attention to punctuation. January by John Updike. The days are short, the sun is dark, hung between the dark and dark. That snowy footsteps track the floor and parkas pile up near the door. The river is a frozen place held still beneath the tree's black lace. The sky is low, the wind is gray, the radiator purrs all day.
So I hope this gave you a little bit of an idea of what the ELA block looks like at Highview. Next slide, please.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Lori Cooney and I teach fourth grade here at Highview. I am also part of the math planning team. And, um, as a team, we meet, uh, at least twice weekly and, um, we plan the lessons for the whole grade level. Um, so when we get together to meet, something that I've noticed is that, um, when we discuss reinventing math for our new learning platform and hybrid model, our objective has not changed. Our objective, our goal is to engage our students in meaningful, standards-based lessons that continue to drive home the fact that math matters. It's a life skill. So while preparing for tonight's presentation, um, I decided to check in with our students. It's always best to go to the source and, and they really let you know how you're doing. They don't hold back. Um, so I asked a few questions. I started asking, well, what's your favorite subject to learn in school? And, um, despite their little masked mouths, their voices were heard loud and clear. About 90% responded to my question without hesitation, math. And that made me feel really good being one of the ones who helped plan the lessons. Um, so out of curiosity, I decided to dig a little deeper. And I started asking, well, why math? What do you, why do you, why is that your favorite? Um, some of the responses included, I like that we use the same program as last year, Eureka Math. And I was thinking, so do I. Um, I like that I get to hear my teacher speaking in a video. Uh, I like that I get to hear other teachers and watch them teach me math sometimes. I know my facts. I love having my name on the math wall of fame in my Schoology course. I like that we use ZURN a lot more this year. And of course, I don't know, I just like math. I also learned that many of our students noted that they enjoy a good competition and that reaching a certain level on a game or earning a badge in Schoology are two popular incentives. Um, some of the games we play, uh, that reinforce math concepts or facts include Quizlet, Quizlet Live, Kahoot, quizzes, and Schoology badges for math success. Um, also a new program that we added this year called Reflex that focuses solely on fact fluency. And they're doing beautiful with that. So based on the responses that I heard from our children, I'm happy to report that I think we're meeting our goal. We have kids talking about math and putting forth their best effort to learn and achieve despite the extra challenge of having a bit more to learn and in a different way. So kudos to our golden knights. You're doing a great job. Uh, gaps, I just mentioned gaps and I would be remiss not to talk about that a little. Uh, teachers on the math planning team are aware of the gaps that occurred due to the pandemic closure in the spring. And not a lesson gets planned without thoughtful consideration of the gaps. One example of bridging gaps in our math program is just last week, how we began our Eureka Module Five fraction unit. Uh, we gave a pre-assessment to gather data about student familiarity and understanding of the basic concept of what a fraction is. Um, based on those results, we knew we had our work cut out for us. Um, a lot of kids hadn't seen a fraction before. Um, so you, you know, we didn't panic. We just, we made a plan and our plan was, uh, that we pulled from Eureka third grade, what they missed or maybe didn't fully absorb. It's not that they missed it. Everything was taught, but in a different way in the spring. So we knew that we had to go over, reteach a little. And, um, you know, just hearing one of my students last week tell me, you know, Mrs. Cooney, I thought when I took that pre-assessment, I was going to not like fractions, but it's so easy now. I'm folding and I'm partitioning and I get it. And that made me very happy too, because we made sure that all of our kids, especially virtual, when we don't see them in person, had the manipulatives to understand and practice with. So, um, I think. them in person, had the manipulatives to understand and practice with. So I think, you know, we're, that, that was good news. Music to my ears to hear that. I am also happy to report and report with confidence that our efforts to fill those gaps, they are yielding results with tremendous support from parents and some creative incentives put together by our staff. The kids are persevering. We see them, they're learning. We see it in their work. We hear it in their conversations, whether it be in Zoom or in person, small group or whole group. And you know, they're, they're learning to show their work in a different kind of way. That is a final point, or another point that I'd like to just mention, showing your work in math, not so easy over the computer, but we're doing it. We're providing different, a variety of ways to show your work. We can't expect every student to be able to manipulate a mouse to, to work at a problem. It sounds like a great idea. I can't do it, like with, with my hand on a Chromebook. So we are giving opportunities to yes, answer your test questions in Schoology, but when I see you, or if you're virtual, parents, please, can you drop off the work? And it's working, you know, so I, it was a little scary at first, you know, how are we going to see their work? Because finding those errors really provide insight of what went wrong, but it's working and it's, it's a relief, you know, showing, giving them choices on that. Anyway, changing gears, I would just now like to share a clip from a 3rd grade math lesson on using area models with multiplication, something that we just finished up in 4th grade. What I love about the clip you're about to see is that it points out one of the many silver linings in our situation here in our reinvented math curriculum by showcasing the pros of meeting in small groups via Zoom and how High View teachers are utilizing our virtual hybrid tools to meet the different needs of all of our students. In my opinion, it's differentiation at its best. Chris, if you could please play the clip on the left.
Since Ms. Kern supports both Ms. McRobbie and Mrs. Brooks' classrooms, we are able to offer a great deal of math differentiation over the course of a week. Ms. McRobbie and Mrs. Brooke begin every math lesson with a whole class concept development. The students attend either in person or virtually depending on the day. As we instruct the class, we communicate with both the at-home and in-person students. In this video, you will see how Ms. McRobbie interacts with both sets of children.
Rectangular array. See, what would I skip count by to find how many unit boxes there are? Come on, online friends. I know someone knows. Caitlin, go ahead.
I can count by threes or fours.
I can count by threes or fours. Good job, Caitlin. So if I counted by fours, I'd be counting rows. Four, go ahead, count with me. See?
Twelve.
Twelve. So there are 12 square units. How does that connect to my area model?
You just put four times four.
What would go on the side?
Three.
Three.
Once the whole class lesson is finished, the students are broken into math groups based on their strengths and needs. Since our flexible groups are based on needs and pods remain separated, each group has in-person and virtual students. The day's assignments and groupings are reviewed with the students by both Ms. McRobbie and Mrs. Brooke. Students then move to their group by meeting in person with a teacher or teaching assistant, going into a different Zoom link or remaining in the classroom. The students who remain with the classroom teacher are then placed into breakout rooms. This allows for both teacher support and independent work opportunities.
After the students have transitioned into their assigned groups, students will begin the student work portion of the lesson. As you will see, Ms. Kern is working with in-person students from Ms. Brooks' class and virtual students from Ms. McRobbie's class.
Hey, Claire. So you found the page you're with us?
Yes.
Okay, good. I'm just gonna mute you for right now. If you have any questions, raise your hand, okay? So we're gonna start here, okay? I know Ms. Brooks' class and in Ms. McRobbie's class, you guys were both just talking about the area models, right? We're moving away from using those square inches and drawing in our grids. And now we're trying to focus on the multiplication part then. Okay? And we're talking again about length and width. And Savannah's gonna give the answer. Savannah, thank you for joining us. We're just going over the Lesson Eight problem set. We're on number one. Okay, it's on page 39. Can you open up to that page for us? Okay. So Brianna's telling us we can do four times seven. Do we all know four times seven? What's a strategy that we could use to help us find four times seven? Emma, what are you thinking? Beautiful. You had the same mindset as Ms. Kern. So I was saying we could skip count or we can even draw those lines to help us in skip counting. Okay? What number do you want to skip count by, Emma?
Seven.
Sevens. Okay, so let's start with what number? Seven. Good. Okay, Ms. Kern?
This model allows for more opportunities for teacher-student interactions and targeted instruction.
Thank you. That was great. I love the flexible grouping and they make it look so easy. And there's a lot of time and planning that goes into it, but it's worth it. So in conclusion, as part of our reinventing math instruction here at High View, the key points I would like to leave you with include the following. Classroom teachers and the math planning team continue to bridge those gaps of concepts that may not have been fully absorbed during our pandemic closure last spring. We communicate daily about collecting data, looking for trends, and figuring out how we will use it to inform our instruction. In terms of planning on the 4th grade team, we have the added benefit on the math planning team of a team that brings together different strengths and perhaps views things through different lenses. We have the math coordinator, consultant teacher, regular ed inclusion teacher, regular ed teacher, and a teacher who moved up from 3rd grade from last year, this year, and is subsequently knowledgeable in the 3rd grade standards and the Eureka curriculum. And most importantly, she helps us bridge those gaps. Finally, my favorite point, we are a group of teachers who are just passionate about teaching and dedicated to our students from wherever they are learning. I have one more video clip that will hopefully sum up math here at High View. Chris, can you please play the second clip?
Math.
Those are kids alone.
Math. Math.
Math.
14 rules of 15.
Thank you.
About the number of plants he got.
I do like math.
Area model.
What do you love about math?
Awesome. Thank you. All right. Have a great day. Your favorite subject. Why? Outstanding. And if you didn't hear that, it's because you're learning skills that you need in life, right?
Math. Why?
Okay, Dejanae likes to learn new problems and figure things out. Awesome.
Breakout.
Five times eight. Why, why math? All right. So is it safe to say you're into the competitive aspect of math? All right. Good job. Thank you. Thank you so much. I would now ask you to change to the next slide and you'll be hearing from Mrs. Kieveney about reinventing hands-on learning experiences.
Hi, I'm Jessica Kieveney and I'm Math and Science Instructional Coordinator. In science, we've had to reconstruct the hands-on learning experiences this year. Traditionally, groups of students share materials and work in small groups or partners. The hybrid model has pushed teachers to reimagine this. Pictures show students constructing circuits both at home and in school using materials that were individually backed by our amazing teaching assistants. These materials were picked up by our online-only students prior to the unit beginning. Through Zoom, students created, displayed, discussed, and shared what they learned. Next slide, please.
Hi, this is Tim Nye again. In the past, we have relied heavily on hard copy workbooks and notebooks, especially for reading and writing. Following a mini lesson, the students would typically keep a reading and writing notebook for an ongoing record of their progression through the different units. We still have mini lessons for ELA hosting students both in person and through Zoom, as you've seen in previous videos. A glimpse of this can be seen in the first video on the left. Chris, if you could play that one for us. First one, narrative writing. As we've been reading, you can pull it up right now if you want. I'm giving it to your friends in here. And then we'll read it together.
A fish swimming below us that was more than six feet long. I go, ah!
The guy with, hey, does that make you want to go on a glass bottom boat? Makes me want to go on a glass bottom boat. Why does it make you want to go on a glass, why does it make you want to go on a glass bottom boat? Garrett? Told you about all really good things, like what? Makes the story interesting. Elizabeth?
Because it's cool to see fish without going in the ocean and it makes you want to go there.
Yeah. So however, this year we have students both in-person and virtual, and this can change very frequently. And with this in mind, we've switched to keeping digital notebooks and using Google Docs and slides instead of hard copy notebooks like we have in the past. And Chris, if you can play the video on there right now and I'll narrate over it. One of the biggest reinventions that we have had to reimagine are the reading and writing conferences. As you'll see in this video here, typically I would meet with students one-on-one to discuss their progress and application of the current concept and strategy. However, this year with social distancing and virtual learning, this type of conference has become a thing of the past, for now at least. Instead, the students work through their assignments in Google Docs and slides. And as they do this, I'm able to pop in and leave them immediate feedback in real time as they're working. All the students' names are listed on the left, so I can view any of their work, whether they're working physically in the classroom or at their kitchen table at home. I've actually come to really enjoy this process of virtual conferencing as it allows me to meet with more students during one period than I normally would have been able to. Next slide, please.
Okay, I'm back. Sorry. Now I'm going to be wearing my ruler hat and I'm going to tell you a little bit about our social emotional learning program, Ruler. We are in year two of the Ruler implementation. And our goal this year was to introduce Ruler to our students and our families. This year especially more than any other, our emphasis was obviously on students' social and emotional well-being. And in order to do that, we started the year off September into October by creating what we call our classroom charters, similar to our classroom rules that we would do in the beginning of the year. But also based on student input, we asked them two very important Ruler questions. The questions that we focused on were, how do you want to feel at school? And how can we get there? What can we do to make you feel that way? So these were some powerful questions and the students got to share their ideas. And then we kind of voted using ABCA. And the kids got, we narrowed it down to our top five words. And for Class 3 JM, the words that we agreed upon were number one, happy. Number two, they wanted to feel safe. Number three was helpful. Number four, respected. And number five was supported. So then we discussed ways that we could behave to help us feel that way. For example, if we wanted to feel happy, we could greet people with a smile in the morning. So just little things and strategies that we could come up with. Our next step was to introduce the students to the mood meter. The mood meter basically breaks emotions into four color quadrants. And this allows children to understand and validate that all emotions matter and they're okay. It helps them to see that it's all right to feel a certain way at different times. Next slide, please. The next slide is a continuation of Ruler, talking about emotions matter. And here's an example of the mood meter. So as the new year came in, in January, we wanted to revisit our classroom charters that we created in October. And recently, we have been doing our mood meter check-ins on Mondays for the AA students and Thursdays for the BB students that are in front of us. The students have a mood meter that they place in their communicator and they just put a little check mark or an X or an indication when they come in of how they're feeling, what quadrant they're in. I do it with them. So I show them like, today wasn't such a great day at the Merz's house. I might be in the, you know, red or blue area to start, but hopefully throughout the day that can change. And we can just get a quick read to see if anybody needs a little, a few minutes or somewhat, you know, some time to talk. The next point I wanted to talk about was a big thank you to Ms. Hink and Mrs. Burgling for compiling a list of specific read aloud books that support these emotion words. And like I had said in the previous slide, I'm really looking forward to using these during my Wednesday Zoom meetings with the children. So basically, the last piece is going to be, I'm going to be talking about is integrating Ruler and the mood meter into many of our different instructional lessons. So we originally started doing this with ELA. We were asking the students, you know, according to the mood meter, can you tell, you know, how does your character feel in the story right now? And give some evidence of my character might be feeling sad or upset or embarrassed. But last week in science, we were actually able to create a lesson that was talking about changes in ecosystems where the students had to use a mood meter to tell how they were feeling about the, from the Lorax movie about the truffula trees being cut down and to give some evidence why they were feeling that way. Please check out the short clip. Chris, if you would play that for the mood meter, some students.
Here we are at the High View Elementary School Emotions Matter bulletin board. We have two friends today from 3JM and they're going to explain the colors on the mood meter.
The angry is angry hat the rest on the bird. The yellow is if you're energetic or nice, but that's not on the board, but you can still use it as a word.
Thank you.
And the blue, you can be sad or tired. And then the green, you can be calm or relaxed.
Great. And which are the colors that you would want to be? Joseph?
I would want to be energetic or something like that in there, or I want to be calm.
Okay. And Molly, would you agree?
Yep, I agree.
Okay. Thank you so much for sharing that with us today.
See ya.
Thank you. Next slide. Hi, I'm Melissa Lipson. I am the elementary school counselor. And every Wednesday at 2:00, I facilitate social emotional learning assembly programs for all 3rd and 4th grade students. The weekly topic, topics are aligned with the New York State Five Social Emotional Learning Competencies, our Ruler program, and our Word of the Month. At the start of each assembly, all students participate by taking a feelings poll. I'm glad to say that since we started doing the assemblies, the top three feelings so far have been happy, proud, and excited. However, as you can see, there are students who do have some negative emotions and they are encouraged to speak to a family member or reach out to me on Schoology, which they do all the time. And I engage with them in conversations. And at times I'll call them into Zoom meetings to discuss the problem and try to help them come up with a solution to this problem. Of course, if it is a big problem, parents are notified. I just love this platform as it allows me to connect with so many more students. And almost immediately as problems arise, I'm able to provide almost immediate feedback. I tell them within 24 hours, but I usually always get right back to them. At the end of each assembly program, students are encouraged- At the end of each assembly program, students are encouraged to set goals, which they are asked to keep posted next to their computers. I ask them to display their goal during the course of the week so they can visually see their personal goals that they have set for themselves and what they're working to achieve. I continue to work collaboratively with all staff and address classroom needs by attending classroom Zoom meetings when invited. I work with students individually. I work with students in small group counseling sessions virtually, as well as working with families who need support at home. Chris, next slide, please. During the assemblies, students often engage in our assemblies by collaborating with one another. Here's an example of some girls from Ms. Dejanero's class where they collaborately, virtually, created a presentation aligned with our Ruler program and our social emotional learning work. This amazing group of third grade students were guest speakers at one of our virtual assembly programs. Chris, will you play the video? And I'll just do a read over. So what these girls are doing is they're describing different emotions that they're being taught and that we talk about and that their teachers talk up to them about, how it feels in their bodies, what to do with that emotion, when they're feeling happy, sad, worried, calm, mad, scared. So they had a great time working on that presentation and presenting it to the, to the third and fourth grade students. Thank you, Emma Reagan, Delia Maddie, and Annabelle for that. Next slide.
So as you can see, even at the young ages, Chris, you could hold on for just one second. Thank you. As you can see, even at the young ages of eight and nine, our students are practicing 21st century presentation skills. In this case, they're practicing communication and collaboration. Prior to the pandemic, these students presented in the classroom to only their peers and teacher. Now they learn new technology skills as well as virtual presentation skills for a wider audience. That could include the entire Highview School, parents, Board of Event members, and also community members. This is one of the silver linings of our current situation. Next slide, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kelly Corderoni, and I am the art teacher of the school. And I'd like to share with you just of the, some of the fun, exciting things that are going on in the special area classes at Highview. Next slide, please. So for our specials this year, we have completely changed our schedule. We are working with a four-week rotation. So each specialist sees one class on each grade level for four weeks at a time. They are receiving supply bags. So for example, in art, they're getting a bag with some paint and paper and so on. In STEM, they're getting a supply bag. And in music, they're even getting their recorders so they can still practice at home. We're doing this so that we can align with our health and safety protocols. And we've even added a new special area class this year, digital literacy, which we'll talk about in a second. We are completely readapting our curriculum to meet all of students' needs, both our in-person students and our students at home. We're working with the words of the month. We're focusing on the district mission, incorporating SEL. We're doing lots of cross-curricular work. As Ms. Lahey had said, we're learning how to use new platforms. And it's these common threads that you'll see throughout our special area classes that are more prevalent than ever. In art, students are learning how to use technology to not only create work, they're using it to share their work with others. This year, we are finally able to bring to life a goal of mine for many years, for students to create their own digital portfolios. They are using Schoology and Seesaw and Google, so they have the option to work with whatever platform they want to share their work. They can share it with their families. They can share it with their teachers, and they can share it with their peers. It's also a great way to keep communicating and sharing work when we are not together, when I have moved on to another class, or if they're at home. Next slide, please.
A new special area schedule, in addition to our health and safety protocols, did not allow for the typical process of checking out library books. Mrs. Burgling, in collaboration with Ms. Hank, developed a new paradigm for borrowing books. Mrs. Burgling can be found setting up in the halls of Highview in the morning and the afternoon. Another new 2020 edition for specials is Digital Literacy with Dan Laney. Students learn about coding, 3D design, and also digital citizenship, such as how to maintain a positive digital footprint. Next slide, please. For health and safety reasons, physical education classes are outdoors as much as possible this year. Our PE teachers have become very creative with their lessons, games, and their use of equipment. All equipment this year is handled only by a single student. At the end of each class, the teachers are sanitizing all the equipment so that it can be used by a student in the next class. PE teachers have worked with our lunch monitors as well to help provide ideas for safe recess games. They're also creating online lessons for our virtual students. Take a look at this video showing a student at home participating in PE. Chris, next slide, please.
In our STEM classes, Mrs. Sexton is using digital thinking as a way to introduce many of her projects this year. It's a way for students who are pretending to work for companies, such as tile companies or candy companies. It's a way for them to create products that are empathetic towards their fake clients. As you can see, there's some examples of some of the products that they've designed here. Chris, if you could please play the video. On the bottom here, we have a jamboard of how students, an example of how students are collaborating when they're in home and in school. And for this project, they had to debate whether cars should be banned from cities or not. And you can see the different comments from students that are in different groups because STEM is so group participatory-based. In STEM class, Mrs. Sexton really focuses on the words of the month. Their students are problem-solving. They're focusing on the four Cs, so they're collaborating and they're creating wonderful things. And they also have to get creative with their materials. Some students that are home can use any objects that they can find to create these really wonderful projects that could be life-changing in the future. Next slide, please.
In general music this year, we're very fortunate to have Ms. Coakley. She has redesigned the curriculum to allow for health and safety protocols. She brings the children outside as often as possible to stretch their vocal cords and practice some singing. But she also has, continues to incorporate the recorder. In addition, she incorporated new engaging experiences for students in the classroom and at home. In this video, students learn the song Tika Tika as they focus on learning about 16th notes, form, and music organization. They use rhythm sticks with this great little mini performance you're about to see. Chris?
Hi, my name is Tony and I'm in fourth grade. This is my birthday today.
Good.
Wonderful. So you can see that's also in the hybrid learning platform. We have been very fortunate to collaborate with Dr. Skiba, Mr. Miller, and Ms. Sadoff since the beginning of the year to bring instrumental music lessons to as many students as possible. We started with in-person lessons, but their recruitment process was so successful that our numbers required us to move to fully virtual lessons in order to maintain health and safety protocols. Here you see a picture of Ms. Sadoff's Zoom lesson with her violin students. Below the picture of the Zoom, you see that students can submit videos of their work to Ms. Sadoff for evaluation and feedback. And here we have a short clip of one of Mr. Miller's fourth grade band students. Mr. Palisi? Thank you. Next slide, please. School-wide events and parent outreach are still essential to us. And in our reopening, continue to be. We value these opportunities to create a sense of school community, and we value the partnership we have with our families. We continued past experiences like Make-A-Wish, World Kindness Day, Strive for '25, and our author visit, and created new experiences like our upcoming March Madness reading tournament. We continue our partnership with the elementary PTA and thank them for their support. Communication with our families is ongoing from the building level and the classroom level. K-12 alerts, digital backpacks, updates to the Highview homepage, parent coffee talks. All of those are available. And bilingual family support is a priority. And through our support, we provide translated written communications, translation services for meetings, and Talking Points app, which is used by staff and families. From the classroom, teachers are communicating constantly through email blasts, Schoology, parent-teacher conferences, phone calls. It is ongoing. We are grateful for these connections, and I would like to extend a huge thank you to our Highview families. We couldn't do this without their ongoing partnership throughout this process. And to our third and fourth graders, we are so proud of your resilience and your accomplishments. Next slide, please. And I'd like to thank you so much for your time this evening and for welcoming us here to present Highview's reopening.
Thank you, Nancy.
That was great. Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you, Nancy, and your team. Amazing.
Well done, well done, well done. You know, you see all those excited little third and fourth graders. It's so cute. They're so adorable. You know, and you, you forget how little they are. But that was wonderful. I mean, great experiences for our kids in all the special areas, as well as the core subjects. Very well done, very well done. Very pleased with how very well you're doing with our children. So we thank you so much. Thank you so much. Does anyone from the board want to say anything?
I'd like to just add my congratulations to a wonderful presentation. It's always so wonderful to see the kids. And your teachers are always so professional. And you can tell they really want the students to learn, no matter what they have, what hoops they have to jump through to do that. You know, I drop off my granddaughter two mornings a week. And from the moment I get anywhere near the school, somebody saying, hi, good morning, Mrs. Bonner is there very often with a big grin. It's just such a welcoming place from the moment that you even approach it. As I'm listening to the presentation, I was so impressed by when you talk about, let's look at a skill and see if there was something safe from last year that they didn't get. As Lori Cooney was talking about fractions and going back and just, you know, taking a child from where they are to where they need to be. Congratulations, guys. It's just a really amazing job. I don't know how you did it, but you're doing it, and I know you will continue to do it. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Well, thank you, everyone. I know you put a lot of work into this presentation, so thank you for doing that. It does keep us informed of what's going on in our school, so thanks. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Amazing job.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. So the next presentation we have is a look at our new secondary social studies textbook proposal. It's exciting.
Yeah.
Sean said that he's going to take us through to overnight. It's going to take us through till tomorrow.
No, Sean, no, Sean.
Yeah, no, this is actually something that we've been trying to get on the agenda, but our agendas have been so packed that poor Sean has been bumped a few times. But here he is tonight. I was not going to let him get bumped again. This is actually critically important because, as you all know, it's board policy that we present to you any new textbooks that we are considering in the district. And the social studies department periodically, over the last couple of years, has come to me and to central office to ask that we consider some new textbooks. And so what you're going to hear tonight is Mr. Kelly, who's the coordinator of our social studies department, is going to walk you through requests for two new AP textbooks. He's, he does not have a long presentation, so he's got just what you need to know in terms of the new text and the cost and some things like that. But, you know, obviously, please don't hesitate to ask any questions. And then once we have the board's approval, we'll be able to let, you know, the business office know so we can get it into next year's budget and be able to order everything. So Sean, you may take it away. Thank you.
Thank you, Meredith. I appreciate it. Obviously, it's a tough act to follow the little ones right there. They do such a great job. And, you know, the fact I have two little ones at home myself, it's just a pleasure to see all the great work that they're doing. But thank you, Dr. Fox. I truly appreciate it. And obviously, we'd like to thank the Board of Education for their time this evening in order for me to present the rationale for us to examine the fact of perhaps purchasing new textbooks for both of our AP social studies course offerings here at Nanyou at High School. I would be amiss if I didn't thank Mr. Carlos Fadago, our AP US history teacher, for his guidance and expertise in terms of navigating the process. And I definitely leaned on him to put these things together for you this evening. As Meredith said, this will be a short presentation, but there have been many different changes that have been made by College Board over the last few years that have led us to this point where we're now investigating these different books. Before I begin, I would just like to take a moment to recognize the hard work, the focus, the stamina of our current cohort of AP students. For them, in these challenging times, their first attempt, many of them, to take an actual AP course, it's just an amazing thing that they've embarked upon. You know, they're inquisitive. They're so capable and enthusiastic in their approach to the rigors that come along with these classes that we know so well on a daily basis, whether it's in person or whether it's on Zoom. You know, they're honing their AP skills, getting ready for their tests in May, analyzing, writing, discussing content, evaluating documents, and sources from multiple perspectives, all at a very high collegiate level. So needless to say, this endeavor that they're partaking in is no easy task at all. And their work ethic and ability to navigate these courses under the constraints in which we're dealing in is really commendable, for sure. So definitely want to, want to give them a big acknowledgement this evening as we present this for you guys. If you go to the next slide, Chris, I appreciate it. Our current books are over a decade old and have surpassed their lifespan. As I stated earlier, the College Board, who administers these courses and exams, have instituted new frameworks and course designs over the last few years. The changes to the scope and sequence of the curriculum, as well as updated historical thinking skills, really necessitates that we update our materials for both courses. We strongly feel that these new textbooks and accompanying support materials, which I will show you as well, will help us provide our AP students with an enhanced experience as they navigate these extremely rigorous courses. Next slide, Chris. The textbooks we're recommending are taken from the College Board's approved list and meet their stringent requirements. But beyond that, these new books correlate with the updated College Board frameworks that promote higher-level thinking skills and really set the stage for student success, not only here at Nanyou, but in the college classroom as well, once they're long gone from Nanyou. We're able to examine different supplemental resources that are available for both teachers and students with the purchasing of these new books. And we really found that, that they really offer some remarkable things that, that we really can put into play almost immediately. In addition, we did our due diligence in terms of conferring with different teachers from around the county, as well as nationally, that we have relationships with, to get a sense in terms of their experiences with the different texts that we did investigate. Next slide, Chris. In AP European History, which I actually teach, we concluded that the Western Civilization Book by Jackson Spielvogel will be the best fit for our students. This text is widely used across the country and is in line with the latest thematic changes that have occurred to the AP curriculum. We were quite impressed with the extensive materials that accompanied this text, along with AP study guides, flashcards, primary source documents, practice exams, and a whole host of online test banks that support this newly redesigned AP European exam that the students will take in May. Next slide, Chris. For our AP US History course, we feel that the American Pageant is our best choice. This text is widely considered to be the gold standard for teaching AP US across the country. This text is aligned with the most up-to-date curriculum and is laden with primary source and critical thinking activities that we know will be beneficial to our students. Next slide, Chris. The AP curriculum, as I told you previously, is quite extensive and had previously been stretched across four different historical periods. As you can see from this slide, both courses have now been whittled down to nine different units of study that provide specific guidance to teachers and students alike in terms of what specific material and skills need to be covered. We really feel that these new textbooks would support this redesign from College Board and provide us and our students with a clearer connection to this updated curriculum. Next slide, Chris. In our research, one of the things that caught our attention with these books was this Engage Online component called MindTap. So if you just stick with me for a minute, I just wanna take you through some of the highlights of their online component here. Really, for a minimal cost, which is roughly $30 for a six-year subscription, students would have access to an ebook, content videos, online assessments, and a multitude of other bells and whistles. Teachers and students would also have access to their book and practice materials anywhere we go. This is certainly a great feature, we know, for teenagers in the modern world in terms of how and where they study, for sure. We also like the fact that teachers can assign progress checks for each unit that will provide teachers with valuable data for student progress throughout the course to ensure that students are grasping key content and skills. Next slide, Chris. The other part of MindTap, which we figured out, was that it's actually compatible with our new learning management system, Schoology. So teachers will have the ability to assign readings, essays, homework assignments in MindTap, and it will actually integrate with our LMS system. You know, we thought that was really a game changer for our students. As we know, they learn whenever and wherever they are, and this new feature will greatly enhance student engagement, for sure. Next slide, Chris. In terms of cost, I laid out two pricing options for each book. The first price is without online access, so it'll be the print-only option. And the second would include the book as well as a six-year subscription to the MindTap program. For the AP European History book, which is the Western Civilization book, the price per textbook would be $131 per book for a total of $7,860. And remember, that's the non-online version. The cost of the textbook and access to MindTap would be $157.25 per book for a total cost of $9,435. Next slide, Chris. Moving to the AP US History course, the cost for the American Pageant textbook with no online access would be $164.50 per book for a total of $9,870. For the textbook and online access to MindTap, the price would come out to $194.50 per book for a total cost of $11,670. You may notice that access to MindTap program is roughly, there's a $30 difference overall, which seems like an extremely good value for all that it has to offer. We strongly feel that these new textbooks and their digital platforms will prove to be a tremendous investment to enhance our AP program at the high school. This move will keep our program modern, definitely align us with the new College Board standards and frameworks, and really provide an enhanced student experience in these challenging courses, for sure. So I appreciate your time tonight. I tried to keep it short, but I'm happy to answer any questions that perhaps you may have.
Yeah, it certainly seems, you know, the online access is like a no-brainer.
Yeah.
Because I think, first of all, we have digital learners in front of us in your classroom. So, yeah.
No doubt. No doubt. We concur with you. And, you know, it's something that, you know, would really be valuable in the current situation in the hybrid model we're in right now. You know, myself and Mr. Fadago would definitely see that we'd be able to reap the benefits, for sure.
Yeah, and I mean, it's time. A decade is a little bit old for history.
That's for sure. No doubt.
I have to say, there's something about Mr. Kelly's barber that I just really appreciate.
Yeah.
Wow, yeah. Well, I guess since I'm a regular lately, we can make fun of our haircuts, right?
Thank you.
This is exciting.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, I think the kids will appreciate. I think the kids will appreciate having new textbooks. You know, something about a new book. I don't know. I'm a book person, so. But thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Sean.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
My next, under unfinished businesses, we have a draft of our district calendar for next year, the 21-22 school year.
Yeah, so we do have our draft. Update on the draft. We posed this to our board for review. It's really not that much different from any other year. I would say that next year is a little bit later. Our instructional time is later with Labor Day being later, and then Rosh Hashanah being the early holidays. There's a lot of non-instructional days right out of the gate. So a lot of school districts are grappling with, you know, instructional days, you know, pre-Labor Day, post-Labor Day. In Nanyouet, we have a culture, our teachers' union, that we don't start prior to Labor Day.
Right.
So with that being said, you know, we work the calendar and the board has been, you know, you have access to it to take a look at it. It doesn't look, you know, it's not that provocative. Like, I moved a couple soup conference days around to make sure that we can get the kiddos in earlier. We're getting them in on 9:10, you know, which is as earliest as I can get them in. Like, I need the first day to welcome the staff back. The very next day, we have kids in in Nanyouet, if we go with this draft. We still have our February break. So we go from 9:10 to 6:24. We have our three soup conference days, which, you know, I can fold out whenever I need to. I just, I move things around. We have a professional development day, and then we have four snow days, which, you know, let's see, you know, what is a snow day after the pandemic? And the virtual world? Like, I have no idea. Like, maybe, maybe snow days are nothing. I don't know. You know, so we'll see. But the draft calendar is there in front of you. To the board, the public, you can't see it, still at board. It's at board approval. They can, they can take a look at it and see what, you know, if there's any adjustments we need to make. We're at 180 days instruction, 184 with the staff, so.
So we will approve it at our, we will approve it at our next board meeting?
Yeah, yeah, if you all, you know, take a look at it and decide to approve it, we'll improve it next time.
Okay. So if anybody has any questions or additions or whatever on this, please ask.
I was looking at the school start and honestly, selfishly, went right, you know, my mind went right to June, just to make sure. We weren't going to that last week. Though I think you made, you made it, you made the mark.
Yeah, June 24th, right?
Done. Do anything later, start to sweat, you know?
It's close to the cut.
It is. It is. Something about that last week of June, you know, I know a lot of families count on getting that early start to the summer, so hopefully we can actually.
No doubt. No doubt, Adrian. Yeah, and if I have to fold out some of my days, you know, I have three days to soup conference days, and then there's a PD day. So Meredith's gonna kill me when I say this, but like, if I have to fold those out, I will. But it crushes her ability to make our programs better. So let's.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank God we're on Zoom. Thank God we're on Zoom.
And I just, I didn't want to interrupt before Kevin did the calendar. We just needed a vote on the textbook.
Ah, okay. Sure. I need a motion, please, to vote on approval of the textbooks.
Lynn.
Lynn, Lynn and Adrian. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Carrie. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Meredith. Next up.
Meredith's instructional days away next year. I, Carrie, no, nobody.
It's every year. I lose this battle every year. Snow days, they could take it back. COVID, lost three of them. I'm losing them like, dropping like.
And I know how.
I'm sorry, Mary.
They are.
They are. Are. I mean, so hard. Really, especially because when the teachers do professional development during the school year, those days help us not have to sub everybody out. I mean, really challenging to get, you know, teams and grade levels of teachers without all those subs, but we'll figure it out.
I'm sure you will. You always do. Next up is our overtime report, Mr. Spagnello.
Yes, in December, as compared this year to last year, we were actually up by four hours, which is, breaks our streak of being in the hundreds of reduction, almost all the hours. And we're talking 520 hours. So it's still down from the previous months. It's just not down as much because we started some cutbacks in terms of overtime that same month. Almost all the snow time is, I'm sorry, almost all the overtime is snow days, snow overtime, because we had a little bit more this year than last year.
Yeah, and next month it'll be the same with this last snowstorm. Thank you. You know, before we go on to new business, it was just, you know, we had our architect, Armon, do a five-year capital plan, which we have to do. The SED makes us do this every year to look at, you know, five-year projection of the kinds of things that, that we might need to do to get us up to, up to snuff. So when he did go over these things, they were very costly items on, on the list. And there's, there are things that, you know, every year we put money away for, for our capital improvements. But the kind of money they're talking about to do the improvements that we need, you know, security improvements in front of the schools, talked about some parts of the roofing that needs to be done, talked about turf fields, talked about science labs in the high school to get them, because they haven't been done, never mind a decade, probably a couple of decades, up to, you know, state-of-the-art science labs. But, and it was a kind of large price tag associated with it. So it led me to think that this means that we're probably going to have to go out and get a bond in order to get all of these items done. So when I started thinking about it, I know that years ago, when they first put on the tax cap, we had retired a bond. And by retiring that bond, we really lost big time on state aid. So I wanted, Mr. Spagnello, maybe the first question to you, Mario, is, you know, we do have a debt coming off shortly, in another year or so. What would happen if we didn't do anything with our state aid? And number two, if we use that debt retirement and put it towards a bond, how much could we do? Or what could we do with no increase in taxes? Because I think that's really important. So maybe you could give us like a little tutorial on what that might look like.
I promise I'll be brief in a tutorial. We have $1.8 million coming off, not in this upcoming year, but the year after. But we budget a year ahead, so we're always, or more than a year ahead. So we're always looking forward because we've got to plan things like this. That $1.8 million is interesting because if we don't spend it, it comes right off of our tax cap. So it gets deducted right from our tax cap. So, I mean, that's always, the board can always do that. The, but what might be better to look at is, I took the liberty of going to our counselors in, for bonds, who ran all the numbers for us. I thought I was right with these numbers, but they double-checked them, and we were. We, there's, there's a couple of factors. There's interest rates, and there's also our, our state aid ability. Right now, we're at 56.5% state aid, which is the highest this district has ever been that I'm aware of. We used to be at, we were in the 20s when we did the last bond, which is the money cutting off for this, by the way, is the thing we did in high school, the middle school, the Miller School. So I went to them, and they put their heads together, and we can do $50 million over 15 years without an increase to our taxpayers of one dime. If we add some certain items that aren't aidable, we'd have to go to 20 years. And depending how we do it, we would probably would still be under that. But we can see $50, $50 million of aidable, and probably a little bit more, 58 if we go to 20 years. The other thing everyone should know is, we get a certain allocation of aid in each building that does kind of expire if we don't use it. I mean, there might be other money left in five years, but right now, we have a certain allocation that the state will give us, as long as we put up the 43.5% on the other side. And those, you know, those are in the $12, $13 million for most of our buildings. So, you know, it's 56.5%. I think the board's got to look at, because the state's gonna be paying for most of it, has got to look at the possibility of a bond. And ultimately, it's, of course, the board's decision to put it up to the voters, and the voters ultimately decide whether or not a bond is taken out.
I mean, considering all the work that needs to be done that went into that plan, that five-year plan that we submitted to the State Aid Department, it would make sense to do it, if we could do it without increasing taxes. I think that's probably key. But also, could you explain what happens to our state aid if we just let the drop, let it drop down? Not, not do anything with the 1.8 million that's coming off that we retired?
It's a, we take it, it gets taken right off of our tax cap.
So that means, right. So that, that means, the last time we did this, and that we, we had to retire our debt, and then after we did that, the governor imposed a 2% tax cap, or the CPI, whichever is less. Unfortunately, it was done afterwards. We probably would have rethought that and not retired the debt had we known we were gonna have a tax cap. And we were down, I think it was negative five on state aid, where everyone else was getting, you know, whatever, 5%. We were, we were down a negative five. We really, there was only a couple in the whole state where that happened to. And I remember at the time saying, we have to make sure that if we ever have any retiring debt, that we don't have that happen, because then we lose a lot of money that should automatically be coming to us, you know, from the state. It just doesn't make sense to me. You know, it's like you retire, you mortgage, you go, yeah, 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 you don't have a mortgage. This is great. And then the, and the person who's in charge of mortgage said, oh, but by the way, now you have to pay me X number of dollars. So it'll, never made any sense to me. So, okay, so we have to probably do a bond. We probably do it for 15 or 20 years, depending on what we all decide has to be done. We would get, end up doing it with no increase to the taxpayers.
An increase to the taxpayers is great.
Yeah, so I think we have to really seriously consider it. This is an opportune time with this debt coming off, to make sure we do things for the next 20 years in the school district. I mean, the last.
Invest in the schools. Yeah.
You know, and, you know, roofs go. Everybody knows who owns a home. Everybody knows you need to keep the upkeep of your, of your infrastructure to make sure that it's, it's perfect, you know, for our kids. So, so I guess our next steps after this is to seriously consider exactly what should go into the bond. We do have that report from our architects, and the board should have a conversation about kinds of things that we think we could do, et cetera, et cetera. So, but I just wanted the public to know that, that we are very much seriously considering doing a bond. There is not gonna be any increase in taxes. We will be able to do all of the items that are on the checkoff list of things that we really should do to make sure our schools stay in prime condition. So, okay.
As they called it, Miss Byrne, generational investment, right?
Right, right. Exactly. Exactly. Thank you, Mr. Spagnello. Okay, so we go on to new business. And the, the first, well, first item under new business is discussion of And the, um, the first, well, first item under new business is discussion of the test of the N- New York State Education Department test waiver requests.
Yeah, so I, I, I could just intro this for Ms. Byrne to talk to the board. Uh, yeah, so, you know, obviously this environment right now, the educational environment is, is different from normal, uh, traditional. You know, our, our teachers have not experienced the same connection with their kids to prep them for, you know, in New York, we, we know that we have to prep kids for standardized tests. That, that's part of the job of being a New York, you know, a New York teacher. But, uh, this year, you know, with the, you know, with the kids on a hybrid and some of them are in class, out of class, whatever. It's been so difficult. Uh, so, you know, the state is saying that it, it may not, it may not be, you know, a hundred percent confident in doing three through eight state tests and then regions. And, uh, they want to know what, what local boards think about this, so. That conversation's just out there.
Yeah, uh, that, you know, thanks. I mean, personally, I think with everything that's gone on, this is not the year to be doing these three to eight testing. Uh, I think it's my pers- this is my personal opinion, so I, I want everybody on the board to, to, to chime in on this. I think it's just not the time.
I, I agree. Like, uh, you were saying that it's just, everybody's different. There's some kids have been home, uh, school, you know, um, virtual more. That, how do you compare school to school throughout the state when, you know, the differences in, in opening? I know the state, um, some of the schools upstate, um, where a friend of mine lives, it was saying that they've only been in school a handful of days this year.
One day, right?
Uh, it's, yeah. So it's, it's, what, where's the comparison of having a standardized test at this point? So I agree.
You know, I, I would.
I struggle to think, i- is it even good data after?
Yeah, I mean, I always felt that the three to eight testing, I mean, I much preferred when we had four, fourth grade and eighth grade, not three to eight. I, I always felt that it, it, it helped a school district with their programs and their curriculum. For sure. But it didn't tell a parent anything specifically about their child. It really didn't tell the child exactly how, how they were doing other than a four, three, two, one. Whereas in the, in the olden days when we did standardized tests, you really got a full screen of, of where your child's, you know, you know, uh, progress was and what, what, where they needed help. And it, and it really did help everybody. I, I'm not talking about the region's exam, because the region's exam in high school does give you a score. So you kind of know, you know, where you are. But the three day testing always seemed to me to not, not be as helpful as it could be if there was a norm based, you know, standardized test that would help everybody. Um, but that's not, that's not how ESA made us do these testing in what New York State. But I would be in favor of, of putting in this, saying yes, I agree that they should have a waiver for this year. With the, for this, for the.
And I just want to clarify, just so everybody is clear on this. The waiver that we're talking about is the New York State waiver to the federal government. It excludes regions exams. Because that's, those are state controlled exams.
Right.
Exams. So that's a separate decision, separate public comments. Um, it also, right now, excludes the nicest slot. So the Hudson Valley, the Auburn, um, the Office of bilingual Studies, they are advocating for our ENL students to continue to take the nicest slot so that school districts, at least the students who are live, so that school districts are able to, um, judge proficiency levels for students and determine the levels that the kids need to be at the following year or if they're ready to test out. Um, which is always a good thing for them as well. So those two big exams are not in this waiver conversation. So I just want everybody to be aware of that, because that's an important. Talking three through eights right now.
Okay.
I would, I would.
Not regions.
No, not regions.
Not regions.
Not regions, just three to eight.
I would just like to say that we just saw a presentation from high, our high view teachers talking about uh, figuring out how to bridge the gap in any gaps that our Nanuet students may have experienced in this pandemic. And I think that we need to spend our time assessing our kids where we see the need. Um, rather than, rather than the standardized tests this year. Um, I just, you know, if you listen to the teachers, I think that's where our time should be spent.
And even to Sue's point, and even if we did like in a, an assessment of where we are from year to year, where our stu- where our students traditionally lie. You know, that might be something more interesting, but it's, again, it's our district base. It's not opened up in comparison from school to school. Because obviously other districts are doing something very different, so.
No, lo- lo- local assessments, for sure.
Christine?
Yeah, I, no, I, I, I agree with that, that we probably, this year in particular, need to put our efforts on, on just really assessing where our kids are at. I just think it's, um, just so, not a level playing field across the state at all that I don't even know if the data will be what it, uh, was in the past. So I don't know. I mean, I I know we don't have a lot of time with the whole waiver thing, so it's hard to gather more information. But as, as far as we are right now, I would be in agreement with pretty much what you were all saying to uh, for, for this year in particular.
Right, thank you. Uh, Lynn?
Um, yeah, I, I don't think there's any way to really administer anything that would be, you know, fair or equitable across the state based on students, families, school districts, all the differences, you know, that we have right now. So, um, I think there's beyond, you know, we thought poor kids had test anxiety before. I can't imagine now what, what it would be like. I mean, I, I respect the fact that we have to measure our success somehow, you know, for the future, but I don't think that, um, this year that, that that's gonna really give us anything that we need. So I think that we can do that and based on the presentation today, as you said, that, you know, we got this for our kids this year, so.
So, so I guess Dr. Mc Cahill, um, this board is for the SED asking the federal government for waivers from the three to eight testing. Okay.
Notice.
Okay, uh, next up on our agenda is Rockland County School Boards, um, Christine.
Yes, so we just had a meeting, um, last night and um, so I, I don't know if everyone is aware, East Ramapo was, the district was divided up into the nine wards and actually there, um, I believe there are three uncontested, um, unopposed ones and six contested slots, so. Um, I believe that's what she said last night. And so the voting, actually it's going, asked to be in by next week. So I guess we'll find out. They're gonna be electing a new board. Um, but basically we spent a lot of our time, um, following up also on the legislative um, webinar that we had and following up with the legislators, because now the new legislators that have come in, um, have been proposing some bills right off the bat. You know, they come in and, and, and obviously want to, um, make a difference. And so we are planning out, um, you know, how we're going to address the legislators in this time and, and also as a follow up so that we didn't just give them all this information and just let it, uh, drop after this. So we're trying to set up individual meetings and also just to reiterate to them that we really need to work hand in hand, um, with the school boards, because whatever proposals they make, you know, what, um, legislation they're putting forth or supporting, um, they really need to get some input for, from the schools, you know, so that it's not impacting us with those, especially those unfunded mandates. Um, so we're, we're just following up on that and I'll keep you up to date as we get to meet with the legislators and where it's headed.
Great, uh, thank you, Christine. Next is up, New York State School Board Association and National. Uh, just reminding, um, those of you who signed up for the Capital Conference tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
At eight thirty, um, it should, it should be good. It's a, obviously a Zoom, Zoom conference, just for everybody's to know, for your own calendar, the National is gonna have a virtual conference this year. And the dates for that are April the eighth to tenth. So if you want to look at your calendars and think about whether or not you want to go virtually on that. We're still waiting to find out if we get, and this is why we really don't know our state aid numbers for sure, um, until we get more federal stimulus money. We will see what happens. I know that, I know that they've been trying to compromise, but the big compromise was to get rid of most of the money for public schools. That, that, that didn't bode well with me. Uh, so I'm really do hoping that they send the money that we have already expended to get our schools safe for children to come into. Um, and, and hopefully they realize that it's on the backs of our taxpayers. So we really are fighting really hard to make sure that, that, that we do get our federal, federal money that we, that we need. Um, so we shall see what happens with that. As far as New York State School Boards Association is concerned, I mean, I, I have to say our advocacy staff at New York State School Board has done an excellent job of keeping everybody really up to date and really informed about what's happening. And we have to keep advocating. And anybody out there who's listening in, um, it would, it would be very helpful if you sent a, a letter, a text, an email to our elected representatives, both at the state and federal level, and tell them that they have to make sure that they expend the monies for public schools. Uh, that it's really important. Other than that, um, it's a, a waiting game. Does anybody have anything for local government? Nothing going on locally. Okay, um, well, thank you all. Uh, next item is a German. I need a motion to adjourn. Aided by Sue, second by Christine. Thank you all. See you next week. We have our next board meeting next Tuesday night because we're all on our February break the week after, so it's two weeks in a row. So see you guys next week and thank you, everybody. Next week.